Important sidebars.
Only the dominant here.
Wear it.
Species that actually eat larvae, so we've had three years.
Not my talent.
Do you think, sir?
Pretty woods.
Yeah, they are pretty woods.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Forgot what time to be on that.
Well, on December, we just had, last December, we had a where we had for the septic field. Instead of putting all that back in, wildflowers.
My greetings, all, and welcome to the special meeting this Monday for, like, the Township's Planning Commission. As usual, our first order of business is our pledge of allegiance. Please rise if you will, face our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, all. Okay. Next order of business is our approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion on that?
So moved?
So moved.
Second.
And we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. D three, I think we got a roll call coming here.
Mr. Sacco?
Hello.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Jasky?
We're here.
Ms. Jacobson?
Here.
Mr. Thomas?
Here.
Mr. Chaplin?
Here.
Ms. Hall?
Here.
Okay, very good, six of seven. A few more than the last time we met for Mr. Magnoli's plan. Approval of the minutes from June 12th, can I get a motion on that?
That'll be at the June meeting?
Uh, June 12th.
The 12th.
Okay.
Yes.
Oh, we're gonna approve the minutes on June 12th.
Yes, not tonight.
All right. Disregard what I said.
Okay.
Uh, correspondence, anything?
Uh, the only correspondence I received was in regards to the agenda item, which is, um, everyone received it and it was emailed out.
Dennis and Carol Pondo.
Correct.
I think we all have that.
Yes.
We got it emailed and we got it here on, on the table, so thank you. Um, public comment on non-agenda related items. Is there anyone here this evening that wants to comment about anything in the world other than what's on the agenda this evening? Welcome, come up to the podium. Don't fight, we got plenty of time. All right, very good. Doesn't look like anyone has a comment, so let's move on to new business. Uh, I don't think there's new business. Let me know, folks, if there is. No, no new business? Well, guess what? We're at the old business. Forest Pond. It looks like Attorney Aloia is ready to come out of the batting, uh, on-deck circle and, and hit away. All right, Lou, come on up there.
Thank you. Mr. John Delisela is going to lead the presentation and I'm going to assist.
All right, thanks.
Good evening. John Delisela, Menorca, Fraus, 48680 Van Dyke Shelby Township. Um, wanted to take everybody through this development one more time, but maybe not as thorough as we did the first meeting. But we are in receipt of all of the review letters. Um, appreciated the comments from planning, engineering, and incorporated those into this plan here. A couple minor changes were made, I'll just point to. But I think the basic ask on this one is, you know, for the 69 units within this location in the township, south of Powell Ridge and north of Forest Brook, two comparable developments, uh, size of our lots and density being comparable, um, six acres of park, and some benefit for the public, through the public walk system. So with that, um, a quick discussion on the, on the density. Uh, being that this is a PUD, we were mindful of the requirements that the planning consultant had noted, the eight points that we have to satisfy. And first and foremost was one that discussed the location, size, and character of the development being congruent with, you know, the surrounding developments. And we believe it is. Unique situation is, the applicant on this has constructed the development to the north and to the south and knows the market in this area. We've got a lot size that's in between the two, um, still providing what the township likes to see in terms of the home building, side-turn garages, and, and, you know, generous sized lots, but not so large that, uh, we can't reach the, uh, the main demand that's out there. Um, we are in receipt of a letter as well, I think the township, sent to the township by the Romeo Community Schools Superintendent in support of this development.
I've seen it.
We are providing access, um, to the school via, via our public walk system within the development and like the opportunity as well as the school, you know, to, to put more homes near the school. Uh, we understand the township's concern for density. I don't believe this location is one of those where you'd want to limit what we're doing if we have a responsible design like I believe we do here. Revisions that we had made based on the comments that we'd received from the planner include maybe more access to the internal park areas that we created, and we are going to put a connection over to Jewel Road. So we have agreed to do that. We did modify as well the, uh, lighting at the entrance area. There's various dark sky options out there, but we did grab one now that was, you know, the certified approved one. And then we clarified the drainage outlet for the site, which is that existing ditch that was constructed as part of Powell Ridge and connects to the 28 Mile Road system. That's consistent with what was planned for this area. Uh, we did see a mention in the letters by the engineer for potential, um, construction of the walk within Jewel Road, so we'd like to discuss that with you tonight. He was agreeable to, um, providing the material costs of that project to extend the walk from the northern frontage of our development to the southern reaches of the Powell Ridge development, basically making that connection. Knowing that we've provided this linkage through Powell Ridge, we know it's like a secondary, it's a redundant one, um, but it will connect you to the 28 Mile Road system, which we're of course putting those walks across our frontage on that side as well. The other concern I think that we just need to touch on is probably the traffic analysis, which we didn't provide one. Um, what we did was we designed this without a connection to Jewel Road, which has some physical limitations. I don't think it can be widened in this area. Uh, so we've avoided that and allowed folks to enter onto 28 Mile Road and then make that decision to go over M 53 and north or Jewel Road north. And looking at the existing traffic study that was in place and the forecasts of developments in the area, we think the level of service is going to be satisfactory for the 69 units that, that we've got proposed here. And I think we reached an agreement as, as to that, uh, at the last meeting. But we ask you to consider that in your motion. With that, I'll turn it over to Ben to speak to the PUD.
Yeah. Okay, Ben, now you're up to hit.
Mine's very, uh, very limited. So we provided a PUD development agreement as part of our initial application. Ms. Christine Anderson did review it, made some suggestions. We have no objection to any of her suggestions. They were straightforward. We're, we are satisfied that if it moved forward with the version that's in your packet, um, based on her edits, that, that unless there's any further additions by the township, we're fine with it.
No, I think last meeting Christine indicated to me that she was all set with whatever the agreement.
Yes. Yeah, her modifications were very reasonable.
Sure. We had a few in our planning letter. Did you have a chance to address those as well? Just minor?
Uh, those are the, consistent with what she added from my understanding.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ben.
Yes.
Anyone else? Mr. Magnoli, Santino, did you want to say anything? You, you don't have to now, there'd be plenty of opportunity.
I have thirty questions if you want to.
Well. Uh, thank you. Well, next we'll turn it over to our staff who doubled down on a second review and their summaries must have been on Ozempic because they got, uh, much thinner and, uh, that just shows you the intensity for which they work. And without them, uh, we'd have a tough time making a decision up here because, uh, we need that ammo to ponder and deliberate here at every board meeting in making a decision, especially with the way we have to vote. So, um, Michael, anything addition to what you've written?
If I could find my letter, it would be helpful. Um, can I pivot and punt over to my neighbor to talk first? If that's okay.
All right.
I saw it a minute ago and I'm not opposed.
You want your letter, Mike? You want it in writing, Michael? Oh, okay, D three's got it for you.
Sorry about that.
Dude, I can still take it over here.
Go ahead, yeah, please.
Okay. Uh, so, so the applicant has noted, uh, what the planning commission will be looking at are the eight special land use criteria. Um, in addition to reviewing those and the development's consistency with those criteria, you know, you're tasked with weighing the benefits of the project as opposed to any waivers or any expected impacts. Uh, the applicant at this point has addressed our comments, um, with the dark sky friendly light, and we do really like the sidewalk connection now coming into the development rather than the separate pathway, um, along Jewel Road and internal. Um, as far as the, the density comments, just to note again, this is more than the, the master plan had envisioned for this area. However, density is not a standard necessarily for the PUD. You're not held to a specific density for these developments. It's the planning commission's job to, again, weigh that impact against the benefits of development.
Well said. I like that. Well said, thank you.
And I, I will leave it at that, um, as long as the PUD agreement revisions have been addressed. It sounds like all the other comments have been addressed by the applicant.
Michael, you ready to hit?
Ready. I gotta pull digitally in physically. Um, there are a few remaining corrections that need to be made. Um, we did comment on the traffic impact analysis and the fact that they're not submitting that and generally agree with the applicant that the entrance, the lack of an entrance on the Jewel Road certainly minimizes their impact to the road network, um, just in terms of creating additional traffic that we, we would have more concerns if there were two entrances that close, a thousand feet from each other. Um, in this case, everything will be coming out that north entrance or onto 28 Mile Road. Um, some plan clarity issues about being able to better see where some of the, and it's on the screen, as you can see, the open space is now shaded, which is, I think visually much easier for both the commission and anyone looking at this plan to understand what they're defining as open space and some of the wetland areas and pond areas that are not included in that, so that's very helpful. You know, I, I did note as, as, um, John had indicated that there's about a thousand feet of off-site, um, pathway that would go from just north of the pond up to where the pathway stops on Jewel Road. They've indicated the willingness to donate the materials. Obviously, our preference and I think the township's preference is to always say, um, they'll simply construct that as a part of their improvements. It's much easier from a, you know, you know, the project that you're getting, you know what the final product looks like. You don't have to go back and forth and determine what those costs would actually be and fight that out at that point. So again, would recommend that. Um, the hatching has also been added that you can see on the screen to indicate the phasing of the project. They had added a line there, but it was just, again, difficult to kind of tell where that was. I think it's very clear on the plan now, so, um, other than that, I did not have any additional comments.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And really, uh, I want to thank all of you for doubling down the second review.
Through the chair to Mike. Um, the question, the idea of constructing the paths, um, and obviously Christine's not here to comment on that, but we can't make that a condition, can we? Or they, do they have to offer it up?
You can't. They would have to propose to do that. Correct.
That's kind of what I thought.
You're right.
Yep. It's an offsite improvement. You can't say you must do this, but they can say, hey, we want to do this as a community benefit to the project.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Um, before the commissioners start commenting, asking questions of y'all, is there anyone here from the public who would like to comment? We had a public hearing, uh, but we always invite folks if they have things to say regarding the matter before us. Uh, everyone has an opportunity to speak in our township. Is there anyone here this evening that would care to comment about the plan before us? Seeing none, we'll move on. Commissioners, uh, we've got questions, I'm sure. Um, go for it. Don't need my permission.
I think the biggest thing I have a problem with is obviously the density. I know it's, uh, I mean, you're asking for a third more than what a typical R one D would allow for, and I know this is a PUD and I'm just not seeing enough of the give and take to take that much density and put it in that area. You're talking an A one district that, I mean, almost sets a precedent for other developments throughout town, and I abut A one, I'm in A one. I would not want this by my house. And it, it just, I, I have a hard time saying I would want it by somebody else's house when I wouldn't, I wouldn't accept it by my own. So that's, that's, that's my biggest, biggest contention is the, is the density in this development.
Anyone else? Commissioners?
Um, no, I think Barry echoed what I, what I was saying at the last meeting and, and, you know, it does, yeah, it does push the density limits of, of what we can do in that area. And with that, one of the things that I, I was trying to dissect today, um, looking at these smaller lots, we've got some, you know, 11,000 square foot lots, we're putting in a 31, 3,500 square foot house. And, you know, the people that are buying these, I think the last time we talked, you, you know, somebody mentioned a price point around $800,000 on these units. Let's assume three quarters of a million, 800, I think that's what they're going for in the area about that size. These are people that want amenities with their property. These are the type of people that want pools and they want cabanas and they want pergolas and they want the structures that they're going to build out from the houses. And with these smaller lots, I'm concerned that we're going to be creating an issue that's going to be coming further down the road that the ZBA is going to be handling where we get people wanting variances every week in order to, to fit something on a lot that may not fit it. I know that there's an easement at the back of these lots. Do we know what size, or what, what that easement size is?
An easement for stormtrooper?
Yeah. How many feet?
Typically, when it's lit along the back, um, it's either 12 or 20 feet, but it would either be six to 10 feet would be taken up of this property.
Okay, so that would, so we've got 40 foot setback, 10 feet of that, so that's going to leave us 30 outside the building.
Yeah, it's in the rear building setback essentially as well, so.
I was just using my property as a, when I was going through this, I've got a, a 18 by 36 foot pool, and if you include my deck, I've got 40 some feet of concrete stretching out from the back of my house. And I'm worried that, you know, with, with these sized lots, we're going to run into issues with that in the future. Um, so on that note, as far as density, those are some of my concerns too, is how we, how we get everything, you know, to fit on these lots without creating future problems.
All right, I think Mr. Magnoli would like to speak on, to address this issue.
I can address that.
Go ahead.
Forest Brook has 80 foot wide lots. Uh, Powell Ridge has 100 foot lots. This is the piece in between, so we went bigger than Forest Brook. Now, remember, when I built all 42 homes over at Forest Brook, there, we, like I mentioned the last meeting, we build, we do the landscaping, 100% homes are complete before I turn them over to the customers, not one home came to the ZBA. So we don't, we give you a turnkey product, so it's not, I, I owned, uh, 28 Mile and Jewel, was that Stonecrest? And when we sold it, there, there was a lot of issues. Everything came to, uh, the ZBA, but not one home at Forest Brook came. And now I have a 10 foot wider lot, so it's a lot easier for me to get. We had to shoehorn a lot of that stuff in Forest Brook, but every house fit. When we finished the landscaping, everything was complete with appliances all, and I got the C of O, then we closed. So you're not going to have the ZBA issue because these lots are bigger and we control everything on the lot, so.
Well, they're, well, they're a little wider, which is good, and I, and I appreciate having the width to do the side entry garages and things like that, that, you know, that's always a plus. Again, my concern is the depth on these, and, and that's, that's the bigger one when you, when you start looking at, at, you know, what should be, I think it's what, a 50 foot setback, and you're asking for a waiver to do a 40 foot setback, and then we've got an easement encroaching on that. You know, it's, yeah, I, like I said, I'm, I'm struggling with, with, you know, the numbers on that. I'd like to see a better, like a, a unit detail to show how all the, you know, that would work and, and, you know, possibly talk about some language in, in the deeds with regards to sorting all of that out, just so there's no surprises in the future.
We're, we're trying to bring a more affordable product to the area. I mean, you go with those big lots, now, remember, that, that lot's 25, 30% of the overall price. You're worried about affordable homes in Washington. Now you're at over a million dollars for these houses. I have a subdivision, Seven Lakes, for a million and up. We're trying to bring, Todd Robinson, the superintendent, loved it because there's more affordable homes. You're going to have kids in these small, not, they're not small homes, but more affordable, and 7, 800,000 is not cheap. But you go with the bigger lots, now the overall cost is up there in price.
All right, Michael, thank you. Anything else?
I have several concerns.
Go ahead, Abby.
Uh, the overall density is a concern and the number of waivers that is, are needed. Uh, the traffic study, I know as a commission, we keep looking at these small developments and say, oh, it's only 40 homes, it's only 25 homes, it's only 50 homes, and we keep waiving that requirement, and they keep adding up. We're looking at Jewel Road right now, and it keeps adding up, and I am concerned, especially with the school there. I know we fought hard to get, um, the light at 29 and Jewel, and I'm just, I am concerned about giving waivers for the traffic studies over and over and over, especially in the same area, because that all keeps adding up. And I'm not a professional to know if we need it or not, but I guess I would like to have that information, uh, to know that yes, we do, or no, we don't. And a waiver for the trees along the street front, um, I think trees are a real benefit. I know there's a concern that they don't want it into the easements for the utilities, but I think trees are a real benefit for any development myself. Of course, with my background, I guess I would, but that's a concern that I have.
Thanks, Abby.
Can I ask something real quick?
Go ahead.
To Mike, um, with the traffic, we, or actually Dana probably could comment too. We had the traffic study done by the, by the township. Twenty nineteen. Three, four years ago now? Or five?
Six years ago now.
Six years ago, okay. Oh, it goes fast. Um, this area was in that study, right? So obviously this, that study was done assuming 46 units, and now we're adding an additional 23.
I think the study actually only showed this area as a potential future development. It didn't even contemplate adding it as any units at that point.
Okay.
It was like a, because that, that report had both a near-term and long-term development.
Okay.
This was in the long-term, and there was not a unit count even associated.
So would that have?
Was this an acreage?
Would it have accounted for anything?
Correct.
It wouldn't have counted for anything.
It would not.
Well, they did with the acreage.
And I think Abby, you know, Abby makes a good point. It's like, it's easy enough to waive it on a 40 or another 20 unit, and pretty soon you had it with several hundred units built, and we haven't looked at a traffic study again. And, and I believe Dana, I'd asked her about that, this was, that, that 2019 one was before the high school. This was, that, that 2019 one was before the high school too. Now, they did provide numbers based on what they thought, you know, the traffic would be, but it's been a while since we've looked at the traffic in that area.
I know we've, we've done this where the traffic studies were waived in, I think it's more in the commercial setting. When they do the commercial setting, are they taking that into consideration, the numbers of vehicles for the developments in commercial, or is that the same concept?
Is, is who taking that into account? The original study?
We did the study.
It did, yeah. So it looked at, I mean, it.
It looked at more in the commercial?
Again, they sat down with the planning department at the time and said, okay, let's talk about where we know we have projects that are coming within the next year or two. If they were commercial, there was a value assigned to them. If they were longer term, I think that's what Dana was checking, was, you know, whether or not they took the acreage and just said, okay, this could render this many number of units. But I don't recall them actually forecasting those in and generating trips from those.
Okay, Michael, thank you.
One more, one more piece I wanted to comment on that too, and it was just, it was a bit of a question in my mind. Since you are connecting out to 28 Mile and not Jewel Road, and then this will connect up through Powell Ridge, if you put 69 units here and you've got the school up there, the, you know, if we, if we go with the idea that, you know, there's going to be school age children here, is that going to be pushing the traffic up through the next subdivision to come out on Jewel there? You know, will this, instead of going down to 28 Mile and going out to Jewel at the corner there, are we going to get a lot of traffic from this subdivision filtering up through the neighboring subdivision to cut off that corner to get to the?
It's probably vice versa as well. I mean, you're going to get people that are leaving to avoid the 29 light at high school time to go south. I think it's going to be a wash. I mean, that's my opinion.
Maybe, yeah, I don't know, I'm just, just things in my mind.
Yeah.
Again, the traffic study is going to try to attempt to guess that, quite honestly. It's going to say, what does human behavior want to do? There will certainly be people that will use, that live in Powell Ridge that'll come in off of 28 if they're coming from the east.
Right.
If they're coming from the south, oh, they'll just keep going up and then they'll turn right into the site. Human behavior is going to figure out where there are jams and where there are not, and they're going to try to avoid it over time.
You know, I, I believe the density is high, but I also think it's a quality development. I think there's, there's going to be some challenges in the future with economics for some of these developers to come in. I'm not saying in this particular case, but, you know, if you want quality development, I, I think perhaps that's the, the give and take. We're not coming in with some track homes here, you know, it looks like a very, you know, again, a quality development. And I felt, I feel that that's something that Washington Township has been pushing for. And Mr. Magnoli has done, I've seen some of his developments, and, you know, they're pretty impressive.
They are, they are very nice.
So that, I think that needs to be a consideration for the commission. And with the traffic count, you're talking with 20 some more homes. You know, is that going to have that much more of an impact? Well, I would think somewhat, but is it going to be noticeable? I don't know. I don't, I don't, I don't think it's going to be that, you know, it's not going to be a deal breaker for me, I guess would be the way that I could say that, so.
I mean, my whole fear on this is, you know, again, it's an A1 district. I live in an A1 district. It also abuts an area that has a very nice development to the north of us that's being moved at, with smaller lots than the, than would be allowed for that area with, through a consent. Now, what is to stop them from buying that farm right across the street from me and turn that into, you know, small lots with big homes and taking up that open space that I've moved out here for? And a lot of people in this community have. So I, I just have a big problem with that. I, I just, again, it, it's just, to me, it, it's saying, we're okay with this, and I'm just not.
Well, to use an, an example that we had recently, if we look up at 31 Mile Road, where all that was large lot zoned for years, and they came, and the zoning was changed, and now you have a group of people that bought into the large lot community up there, and now it's going to be multifamily, industrial, you know, suburban residential, and those people are not happy with the, you know, the, what they're being surrounded by now. So, you know, do we, you know, what's the, I guess I look at it, you know, the developer has rights to develop his property the way, you know, the way that he sees fit, and, but the residents have rights to, you know, to enjoy their property the way that it was.
Can we speak to that?
Absolutely.
Hold on. Dr. Hall, do you have anything to add? I do, before you respond.
Sure.
I agree with Pete. I don't see this plan before us as a density setting issue at all. It is unique. It is next to the one and only high school in this township. Romeo Community Schools Superintendent put in writing a concern of why this is an important development. Now, during the early part of this year, we denied two plans based on density, but more than basing it on density, it was the spinoffs of that density that negated those two plans enormously. We have to measure spinoffs, whether they are negative or they are positive. I do not see negative spinoff here. I see nothing but positive, with students who can walk to school and families who will rest assure that their kids will have the opportunity not to wait out at the street for that big 70 passenger yellow school bus in all kinds of weather, but they could walk to school, walk to the football game, enjoy life the way I had it when I was going to school K through 12. I got to walk to school. I didn't know what a school bus looked like till I hit high school, and we had a raggedy, worn out, two buses at Notre Dame High to carry the teams and the band to events. I never rode on a school bus. And you want to talk about the problems today and the issues of today that kids face, this generation faces? Where the hell is it? That three by five iPhone that they all talk to each other with, whether on the school bus or in their classroom, sending stupid onerous messages and images to each other because they cannot talk to each other face to face. Yeah, now, this has been my speech, and I've prepared it for quite a while, and I've thought about it for quite a while, and I've been a density person for 15 years, and they aren't making any land next to our high school anymore. This is a unique opportunity, and if this were 40 years ago, I'd be first in line to build a house here, knowing my kids could walk to that school. That is an opportunity and privilege that does not exist today in most communities. When I did work for the Attorney General's Office for 11 years, doing presentations in schools throughout this state, you put your GPS on, you'd hit a subdivision, and you would be driving through that subdivision of homes, wondering where in the heck is the school? And then all of a sudden, there's the school. There's a tradition in this land, and it's a great one. We build residential around churches and schools, and this is an opportunity of Americana historic tradition, of a quality builder who lives in the community, who's not here today and gone tomorrow, he's not going to belly up, file bankruptcy, and stiff a bunch of homeowners halfway through their contract. No, he's building a quality project like Peter mentioned, and that is quite important. I look at the schematic. The development I live in, Washington Point at 28 and Mount, you could put Washington Point right on here, and I have not heard in 20-plus years, folks, any of my neighbors wandering around the development saying, it's too dense, I bought the wrong house, I have to move. You know how much residents who live in these developments think about density? Right here, zero. It's a number. In our plan for the master plan and auditing of implementation, one of my categories that Kayla asked, list five some months back, one of them is quality of life, and this is a quality of life issue. It's not a density issue. It's not a traffic issue. It's not any kind of issue that would negate the positive spinoffs here. And I will add a couple more things. The superintendent could have drawn on about the cost of, of the school system to purchase additional buses. What do you think a big yellow 70 foot, 70 passenger school bus costs these days, electric or diesel? Anywhere from 300 to 500,000 dollars. Now, the less they have to buy buses and try to find people with CDLs to drive them, because thanks to the voters about 20 years ago, allowing certain types of drugs to be permitted, people can't hold on to CDLs today. These school districts are begging for people to drive school buses, but they can't find them. They can't find them with search warrants because they're ineligible, it's a federal licensing issue. Not only the drivers, but the mechanics and the cost of maintaining. That's a great savings to the school system. The point the superintendent made about our losing students in the lower grades is significant. It's not that we're losing residents out here. We are getting more residents, we are getting more students, but people are choosing other methods of education for their kids. And it's no offense to the Romeo Community Schools, it is an overall general impression of the public school education system that really suffers in the inner cities and the urban areas, not in areas such as this, but people are choosing other school and education because of that imagery. So I don't mean to jump on any of our commissioners. I know you're here to place a vote, you have your reasons. Our staffs work hard, double time on this. Double time. To me, this is a highly privileged opportunity. They're not making land around that high school or schools in this community anymore. And this would be such a privilege for 60-plus families, to be able to walk to football games, to be able to walk to functions and events at the school. This is how community is built. People don't walk around thinking about dimensions, and it's too dense. Come on. You don't have people walking around their development saying, it's too dense. No, we talk about it. We talk about it because it's part of our requirement, and it's our requirement of our staff to put that information together for us. But we're here to talk about the benefits, the positive benefits of a PUD, a planned unit development. It's not a perfect unit development, and no one should ever let perfect stand in the way of good. And that's all I see here is good. So I've got that to say, I could add more, and I don't want to put you to sleep, but John, Ben, respond to our commissioner, please.
I'd like that, I'd like to respond to that, if you don't mind, Commissioner.
Go ahead, buddy.
Uh, last I checked, if you had 46 units there, you could still walk to that school. And you know what? I disagree with what you're saying. I do, I would walk around this community, and if it was in my area, I would say, yeah, that's too dense. So I disagree with you.
Okay, okay, Barry. Well noted.
Yeah. So oftentimes, when we, you know, propose these developments that might be in an open area where you're breaking new ground, well, you know, we're moving to a higher density, we're not sure about this, there might be some fear, there might be a comparison that you could draw to your, you know, agricultural zone property next to a very dense development and say how it, you know, this wouldn't work. We've kind of gone down this road the last 15-plus years, and Forest Brook came in to the south, Powell Ridge came into the north, and we're right in between the two. That would be harmonious with the surrounding development. Now, to the east of us, there's an industrial building for the schools, but let's, let's keep that out. You know, we strategically placed our basin over there and gave our residents ample room to be away from that. Also provided some no neighbors for the folks on 28 Mile. We also limit in Powell Ridge in this development and Forest Brook, neighbors behind you. So this development here, only the central lots will have a neighbor immediately behind them. Powell Ridge as well. There's open space areas preserved in Powell Ridge along the perimeter of the site to give them more room, okay? So you, what we're moving to, and I think the planning consultant probably speak to it because she's been to many, no, she's been through all the schooling on it too, with open space developments, what do you do? You, you preserve the open space and you put a moderately sized lot there so you can enjoy the open space. We've got six acres of open space that actually acts as a park versus many of the developments you might have approved previously that have them trimmed out in the, in the rear yard areas. This, these are parks with ponds and decent views. One's going to be an active pond for the kids to play with. So we've got some unique characteristics here, but we fit right into what was previously approved. Now, on the west side of Jewel Road, there are single family lots, and there's a lot of limitations there. We're right next to M53. So I, I can appreciate that people wouldn't want to live behind this, but if I'm living in Powell Ridge, or if I'm in Forest Brook, I'm going to drive by and say, it looks, it looks consistent with what we live in. But if you go by and you see 46 units spaced out all throughout, you're going to wonder what, what kind of planning was this? So we think we've got something that works. We'd like you to consider it, and that's, that's.
We will consider it, John. And one thing I will add, that our RA1 current development, 40,000 square feet, ancient, was for well and scepter. When the township elected, hired, appointed years ago, determined that agriculture was fading and not the future of this township, they procured a system of infrastructure for water and sewer. This has got water and sewer, and I will break the moment and ask Michael. Michael, do 60-plus odd lots overtax the water and sewer infrastructure at this site?
No, as I indicated in my letter, there's adequate capacity to serve either 46, 42, or 69 units.
Thank you.
Something can handle.
Now, I don't know what people expect about density. It's not a poison pill for me in this matter by any stretch. In the two cases earlier this year, we denied on reasons that were sound, the spinoff was negative because of the density. It's not negative here. We have to live with development that is going to be every time, virtually every time, 10 pounds of stuff packed into a five pound bag. That's the life. What do you expect developers to do? These developments cost bucks to put the underground in to these developments and put the roads, the sidewalks, and all the other stuff that goes with it, like they've been here twice. And we're not talking about a shanty town. Again, you could put Washington Point, where I've lived for 20 some years, on this schematic. It's the same thing. I think the poison pill density issue fits in most occasions. For me, it does not fit here. Ben, did you have something?
No, I think you've hit on, I do have a couple of points, but I think you hit on that, and, and that's what we're looking at. We believe that this is a transitional development for the school, and, and we also wanted to highlight the fact that we had options to take out the ponds and then develop those aspects to spread the development out more, but we felt that it would be more attractive to the community if we kept the ponds there. And it's a better, it's a better point for the community, they can use the open space, and also the fishing pond, and we felt like that was a positive thing for the kids to use. One is along Jewel Road there, and some, the reason why we need the tree waiver is because, you know, the road department just is not in favor of putting trees along, along that right of way there. It's an issue, and so that, and you'll see that we have a pond immediately adjacent to it, so that, those are part of the reasons why. In addition, again, that, that's really what I wanted to say. I think with the PUD, it's easy to say, well, maybe this is too dense, but, you know, you're looking at Powell Ridge next door, I think it's 50 acres, which is very close, we're, we're like 46 or 48. They have more units, which is 66 units, these are 62, which is less. So it's very consistent in terms of the, of the amount of homes. And again, we provide that attractive open space, which we think people will gravitate to. This is a development for families, for families that are going to come here and, and their kids are going to go to school. These price points are going to be right in there. It's, it's, you know, 800, 900,000, you know, it's still high compared to old, old former price points, but it's still a complimentary price point to the community. It's not a $500,000 home or 250,000.
Well, Ben, if we're homes built on the, the 40,000 square foot lots, they'd be $3 million homes.
Right.
And we're going to build 2,000 square foot ranches on 40,000 square feet, that's almost an acre. I mean, let's be reasonable about this. The founders here, long before we sat up here, discovered, figured out that it's going to be residential. That's our tax base. You want to end up like the two communities? You want to end up like the two communities north of us? Uh, they got to entice taxation by opening up a 24-hour dispensary? Uh, you want to think about that? I'd like to be in their shoes. Our tax base is residential right now and will be for the foreseeable future, and if we keep making decisions that don't fit, people like this quality builders, they're not going to come here anymore.
Well, I don't, I don't think anybody's ever questioned the quality of the build on this, Bob, or any of the, you know, Mr. Magnoli's ever built. It's not, it's not an issue.
I ain't talking about his quality, John.
Yeah.
I'm talking about what's out there. This man has probably communities calling him, saying, please come here and build. We need residential built, and he can testify to that. But Michael, it's your floor, your show. What do you got to say?
I just wanted to correct Mr. Aloya. There's 69 lots, not 62, and, and we're not taking trees out because we're trying to save money. Road Commission and the Water Department don't want them there, but if you want replacement trees, whatever those would be, we'll plant them somewhere. I mean, if you, these lots were designed so you can't see in from Jewel or 28, we'll put more if that's what you'd like, but in the fronts of the lots, they don't want them anymore. That, and Mr. Miller's comment, uh, that he, uh, you can't force me for the concrete up along Jewel. I'll donate that. I mean, I, I'm not looking to save money on the concrete, so.
No.
If that's what you want, we'll, we'll donate the concrete for the connection up to down Jewel Road. We're not, in all my developments, we don't look to save money. We, we got to make it right. Remember, you guys approved me for 55 lots at Seven Lakes. I only built 38 because I felt 38 was the right number, bigger lots out there.
I think you were on to something. Keep that thinking going.
Yeah, well, but over here, I believe you, yeah, it's, it's the only natural fit, 80, 90, 100, and you're next to the school. You want it, you want the kids. I mean, it's the community, and Mr. Sackles is correct. These subdivisions, nobody walks around with density. Look at Forest Brook. I put a couple miles of walking pass. I got three or four miles in Seven Lakes. It's going to be, they're going to walk around and they're going to be all contained within this unit. So nobody's going to complain about, if they're complaining about the density, they're not going to buy, and that's, that's not going to be the case. There is a demand to get into this product. Forest Brook, like I mentioned, the first house went up for sale, and I built that four or five years ago. These units don't, these aren't, they're not coming in going out. When we build this, they stay. There's going to be no ZBA problems. I'm not giving you the house until I'm done. These are turnkey products, so that's all I wanted to mention.
All right. Thanks, Mike. Santino, do you have anything? Don't be bashful.
I, I did just want to verify the street tree comment. Um, that, that is something that's come up a lot with township staff. Um, that is a township issue as well as a county issue where we're just not able to get the trees in over the utilities. So even projects that have been approved with the street trees are now coming back, and we're, we're having to figure out ways to work around that because they can't get them in. Um, so I just wanted to throw that out there.
I saw an Eagle issue on one of the first review sheets. Are we, is Eagle okay with what's going on in this development?
They provided a comment letter that basically they should set up a pre-development meeting, nothing out of the ordinary. They're, they're staying mostly, I believe, completely out of all the wetland areas.
That was.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't see, I don't anticipate an issue. And I'll just add a correction to my correction earlier. Dana was correct. The 2019 township study did include this site in the long-term development, which did not have a year range per se, but they included it for the 42 acres, and it assumed a density with that acreage based on the current zoning of that. So it was included in there. Traffic intersection of 28 and Jewel in the near-term development, which was five years or less, had level of service issues on northbound and southbound, uh, Jewel, um, in the AM. That same issue obviously exists in the long term because it's simply a stop sign, four-way stop sign at that intersection. So yes, there are recommendations in that plan that eventually that has to be upgraded as the development continues to come in, but traffic signal is going to eventually be appropriate there. I do not suspect, but don't have the numbers to back it up, that, that these additional units is that tipping point. Um, the near-term development, I will say, did include all of Clifton Corners being built. That was in 2019. That was when that was going through the PUD process. There has not to date been a single unit built in Clifton Corners.
Mike, haven't we always talked about a traffic signal at 28 and Jewel?
It's included as a recommendation in that plan. I mean, ultimately, every single one of these mile road intersections is going to be upgraded to a traffic signal at time or a roundabout, right? Um, so yeah, eventually. This one might be roundabout friendly only because there is weird kind of right-of-way here, if you remember, um, with, uh, the M-dot intersection there with the bridge.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That's why it's kind of jagged at that corner, so you may actually have some space to fit it.
Okay.
But that's for another time, just mentioning. I just want to clarify, Mike.
Well, I have one other thing on the, on the development plan. I notice there was, the, the plan didn't show any connection of the walkways to, at the corners, the crosswalks to cross, uh, 28 and, um, Jewel. They just, it just wraps around the very corner of that sub. Is there a reason for that, or would there be a crosswalk to go across the streets?
We typically wouldn't require them to cross to something that is not there.
But there is to the south.
There is to the south, and they're not showing?
I don't believe they're showing it. I believe there's a crosswalk on the south, south, isn't it to the southeast corner, I believe?
Oh, this is broken.
I'd have to go to Google again.
Yeah, John, there is a crosswalk, and I don't know if it's shown on your existing that comes to the north. Yeah, that topo's out of date.
And as for the stra, the traffic study, I mean, regardless of which way we go with this, whether it's 69 or wherever it ends up, I think the traffic study, being that they already accounted for nearly 50 or, or 50 homes, puts it in the same realm. I wouldn't.
The study's going to tell you the same thing.
It's going to say the same, exactly. So I think at this point.
I think that's why I wanted to make that point.
It'd be a good reason to waive that study to pursue that.
They're saying it went from worst to marginally worst?
Went from like E to F, yeah.
Well, and then also, like, like Mike said, it included Clifton Corners, it included Emerald Creek.
And none of those were there.
It included, you know, a lot of other developments and developable land in that area.
Roads is going to be reactionary to whatever is there at the time, and they're going to bring that light when it's time to bring that light.
There you go.
So whether, whether the houses are there or now, or, they're not going to put it there because we're putting in these houses. It's going to come when Clifton comes or one of those other developments around. So I, I don't have a problem with that. I, and I'm not saying this development should be 46 homes. I'm just saying I think this should be somewhere in between. Whether Bob, Bob's very passionate about what he thinks, I'm passionate about what I think.
I'm not sure. I couldn't tell.
But I, 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 I just think it should be somewhere in the middle, but that's my home, my opinion.
You know, I did want to make a comment on the school stuff because it's, it is important. I mean, you know, we need to look at that. Um, so I did a little digging into it, and, you know, in, in some, I tend to agree with, with Supervisor Robinson's letter. Um, I just look at it from my own experience and say, does it really, you know, the, the points he's making, how well do they fit with this development? And, you know, what I'm talking about is, is the area where it says, you know, it talks about, they've discussed the prospective development and the desire to pursue increased density as compared to the previous development in hopes of making the homes more affordable. I, I hear the word affordable, and I look at a home that's going to be $800,000 plus. I look at, at Powell Ridge. I just checked today what they're selling for, and there are 700, 800s of recent sales. Um, you know, you talk about making, you know, any avenue we can take to provide some reasonably priced housing for young, hard-working families. Are young, hard-working families, you know, the first-time homebuyers moving into these type of units? You know, I, I certainly know that I, when I was a young, you know, first-time homeowner, I wasn't buying an $800,000 house. Now, maybe there are some out there that can, and, and good for them.
There are.
But I wasn't, I wasn't one of them. And, and the other point that I wanted to make with regards to the students, um, I did some, some digging, and I went to the National Association of Realtors, and I got a 2024 profile of homebuyers. And one of the things that I found was that the percentage of homebuyers with children under the age of 18 has dropped to its lowest level historically. Only 27% of all homebuyers have children in the home under 18. So if we apply that metric, that would mean less than 30% of the people buying into any subdivision would have children in the home under the age of 18. And then if you apply the filter of home pricing, $750,000 plus, that number drops significantly again. So, you know, while I appreciate Mr. Robinson's want to get more, more students in the area, I don't know that, that this particular subdivision priced where it's at with the number of, of people that have school-aged children is going to draw a huge amount of students to the district.
Well, so I, if I can respond to that, so we're in a, we're in a different demographic here, though, and the fact of the matter is, I think Washington Township prides itself on its school district, and it also prides itself on being an upscale community. So the benefit is, you get the benefit of living in an upscale community. Also, I mean, I'm out there too, and I'm, I'm working in this market, and I understand that the costs of homes are going up exponentially. The, the home that was 150,000 is now 300,000. The home that was 300,000 is now 500,000. The one that was 500,000 is now 800,000. The dynamic has changed, and so, um, we're looking at it based on today's market, and if, if this community wants to continue to, to draw people that can, that within that demographic where they have families and, and they can live within this community, which is an upscale community, it's a perfect product because as you get these lots bigger, you're going to have to build bigger homes, and it's becoming, the million-dollar tipping point is very easy to meet now. It's not hard. And that house that was 600,000, 700,000, it's now a million. And the cost of materials now to build these homes is astronomical. So the cost of land, the cost to build is where it is, and again, I, I, I hope you appreciate that by keeping the open space amenities, that's what we design in order to, to be able to keep those things. And so, um, that, that's really the point. The other point, I just want to make one small point, and there was a, a, a request about extending the sidewalk past our development, and I, I learned a very, about a case recently from Mr. Seabird, actually, who's a fantastic lawyer, and there's a case that came down with the Sixth Circuit in the last two years that said a community cannot condition their approval on requiring someone to build a sidewalk on an adjacent property. And that, and, and I'm sure Mr. Seabird's explained that to this community, um, based on that recent decision. We are offering to donate the materials. Also, we don't know what the easement situation is. They're other people's property. They may not welcome that. I know that I do the gap program for McComb Township. It's a battle to get people to agree to put in their sidewalks. We have to go to condemnation often, and I, that's not something that we really are equipped to deal with, and so I think Mr. Magnoli's offer to donate the materials to enable the township to go in, get the easements, work with the community, and that can be done is, is really, it should be through a township program, so.
So, uh, thank you. I'm, I'm of the opinion that, you know, if, if you're going to have higher density, then you would want it in that particular area. And I think it's a matter of economics for, for the developer as well, as I said earlier, that if you want a beautiful development like this, unfortunately, you have to have the density. Uh, the, the, the master plan allowed for, you know, less density, more to the west, west of M-53, and especially along the Mount Corridor. So I, I just see this as a good fit. I see it as a quality development. I don't see it having any, any negative impact with traffic. I think it has a positive impact for schools. It's just something that, that I think that the township needs.
Hey, Peter. I need one more question. I think this might be for you, Mike. Just with the existing ponds, any issues with the slopes into the ponds, any, anything that we need to look at with regard to, because, you know, there are going to be pathways and people fishing and things like that, you know, that.
Oh, with the irrigation pond out there by Jewel? Um, you know, we have an ordinance that relates to residential ponds and has standards that was adopted a few years ago. Because it's an existing pond, um, gosh, we may want a bathymetric survey of it to understand what's happening beneath that water and whether or not it's safe to have someone fishing or walking up to it because they could maybe not get out of it very easily.
That would be a concern.
So I, you know, I don't, I don't know what standard we would hold them to right now because it may not be super easy to modify that if it's slightly off, but it's close. That's the information I'll give you. You guys can decide.
Well, thank you for that clarity.
I, I apologize. Again, I doubt it's going to conform to what our current standard is for a residential pond, um, but it is a valid point that, you know, if it's a sheer cliff, it certainly isn't a safe opportunity for someone who might stumble into it to be able to get out.
I would just ask the staff here and the applicants, um, look, whatever, you know, goes forward here as far as our vote, which is looking, going one way and looking, going another, um, would you have any issue with working with our staff to maintain or fulfill any loose ends that they feel is necessary in the administrative process? That'd be my question A. Go ahead.
My answer to A is, I've been working with this community for 41 years. The, the all-homing, I'm here every day in this building, so of course, I'm always cooperating. Whatever they need, we're not complaining, like you mentioned. I live here, I want it right, so whatever the board says, we always change it.
Okay.
Pretty true. Wait a minute. Is this, is this being recorded? Because I have, I have a request. I have a request.
My B is one last thought, and, um, while some of us have talked about and overtalked about density and being glue or bad, um, you've got a nice schematic here. No one's mentioned how many lots would, uh, make them happy to alleviate the density. Is this something that you could possibly consider?
We're on a time frame, straight. We're with the sellers, and we'd have to start from scratch. We're not going to be here in time frame. 17 is our deadline. It's either the morning or the afternoon, and, uh, we've been working with them for quite a long time, but they have an extension to get through the board, but if it doesn't go, I got to make a decision on the 17th. So we run the numbers like today. John, I have to just get a clean piece of paper and start again, and we've been working on it for a couple of months. So I know, I mean, you can do what's right for the community, but I can't go to 17 p.m. to get through the sellers. I think that's why we have the special meeting. We're trying to.
Uh, it's understood.
We're trying to make it everybody have.
It's, it's understood, and I, I know it's not simple to just X out lots and say, hey, we're going to, we're going to reduce the density for you. Fully understood. Just a thought.
We'd rather not do it just because.
I tell you, John?
We'd rather not just eliminate density because the thought is, it's too much. If, if we can point to something and kind of say, this is why we believe it's too much, traffic issue, no, we've eliminated that, uh, site issue, no, you can only see seven lots from the main road, so everything's going to be hidden by open space parks and such. Um, what else is there?
Well, John, as a chair, I, I have to, you know, I listen to all our members. They, 99% of the time persuade me more than I'll ever persuade them. That's what I've learned from the many, many years in public service, chairing any kind of commission, committee, or board. You listen to what your colleagues are saying and find out which way the wind is blowing. And for some of us here, we've got a headwind with some of the others, and it hasn't been a vote yet. We haven't cast, we haven't had a motion, uh, but we're getting close. And, uh, I just thought I'd throw those two things out there to see what you had to offer. And maybe some of our folks up here have something else to suggest, and 90% of the time, the things I say and throw out there are to get my folks thinking, so they will ask questions, so I can think. It's all about us thinking because we're the players once the gavel comes down, and, uh, we need all the help we can get when it comes to making our vote. So if you got anything else, fine. Commissioners, if you got anything else, fine. Uh, it's probably time to make a motion if we don't. John, do you have more? You're all set?
That's fine unless you have other questions for us.
Right, no, I, I just want to say that, of course, we'll work with your, your, your team, but it seems to me that if there's, from listening to, to the panel here, to the commission, that if the objection's density, it's not really an issue of working with your group, it's an issue of preference based on density, right? And I just ask before you vote is, take into consideration the open space and where it's looking at, and that does affect the configuration of this development in a lot of ways because[1769.23] Because there's a lot of things that as an engineer that John has to answer to in terms of specifications in order to create a development. And one slight shift may have seismic changes in the way that this property is and renders it undevelopable. So there's a way that, there's a reason why this is laid out this way. And it maximizes a lot of aspects that is desirable for this community and this development. And the only objection then would be density, so.
All right, Ben.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay. With that being said, I would be remiss if I didn't add that this to me is a quality of life issue for our township. It's not about numbers. It's about quality. And I know some of us here have a, a real strong position on density. But I'd be remiss if I didn't make the motion here and hopefully see it seconded. Whether it makes it or not, we are putting a recommendation into the Board of Trustees. They will make the call. And they can make that decision about density if we fail or pass here. So I'm going to make a motion to recommend approval and a formal planned unit development application submitted for four ponds. A single-family residential development located at the northeast corner of 28 Mile and Jewel Road, parcel number 240423327, that consists of approximately 69 single-family residential units. This decision comes with consideration of the following waivers requested from the underlying zoning district. Since this original and current zoning is A1, I think our staff has gone through the waivers. They have denoted whether they are accepted or not. But the applicant has, has committed to approving and going through whatever the staff requires in this approval. So we're going to have to trust that. And I think it's a good trust because we have a quality applicant in front of us.
So, sorry, just a quick note. The waivers need to be approved by the planning commission as a part of the motion.
Yes.
So you, you approve or deny each waiver and the findings as well on the special land use criteria.
Okay. Has anyone got the list of every waiver?
If you turn to the plan, um, plan unit development agreement with the notes from Christine Anderson, they're listed in there. You'll find that with the review letters. So a little bit further in your packet. This should be page 112. I know it's kind of on the bottom.
112?
Yep. And if you, let's see. That's where it starts. If you go to.
Is this it? On page two.
That's the marked version.
Oh, okay. Is this page 21 of, is that what I'm looking at?
Yep. And then under that, um,
Might be here longer than I thought.
Want to go to page 112?
Is this it?
It's 112, Exhibit B.
Yeah, 112. And then it goes into Exhibit B, right?
I don't, I don't have 112.
We, we also, if it's easier, it's listed in our review letter, page four. The applicant has requested waivers from the dimensional standards of the A1 zone and also from the street tree requirements for the whole development.
Is that your page four, Kayla?
Correct.
Yeah, that's it. It's in two places.
Thank you, Barry.
Yeah, or it's sort of the development of the PUD property. That's where she has that listed, right, for the waivers? So either, either or.
Is that A through H?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Barry. Thank you, Abby. This requirement is, I'm sorry, where are we? With consider, repeating up forward, backing up, with consideration of the following waivers as requested from the underlying, underlying zoning district, A1 agricultural residential. And there are waivers because that's an outdated condition as far as zoning. So we're looking at page 112 of the agreement. And it states, number two, development of PUD property. Township has approved the PUD to develop the property and developer is hereby authorized to develop the property in accordance with the general design plan with the following proposed features and variations from the existing A1 agriculture zoning requirement stated in section 311 as depicted and described on the general design plan attached as Exhibit B A. Approximately 6.15 acres of preserved land as open space. B, a maximum of 69 detached, single-family residential units. C, density of 1.58 single-family residential units per acre variance from 1.06 units per acre estimated yield under A1 zoning increase of .52 dwellings per acre. D, minimum lot area, 11,418 square footage. Average lot area, almost 14,000 square feet variance from the ancient and historic A1, 40,000 square feet. A reduction of up to 28,585. C, minimum lot width, 85 feet variance from 120 foot width, reduction of up to 35 feet. F, minimum side yard setback, 10 feet to 20 feet. Total variance from minimum 30 feet to 60 feet, total reduction of up to 20 feet to 40 feet total. G, minimum rear yard setback, 40 feet variance from 50 feet, reduction of up to 10 feet. Zero street trees per lot variance from one tree per lot. Onward and upward. This recommendation also is based on the following findings of fact associated with the eight special land use standards, which are as follows. Bear with me. The proposed use shall be of such location, which is very key, size and character, that it will be in harmony with the appropriate and orderly development of surrounding neighborhood and applicable regulations of the zoning district in which it is to be located. This plat is next to the only high school in our township. It is also next to other developments that are of like kind. So it fills the bill here on number one of eight special land uses. Number two, the proposed use shall be of a nature that will make vehicular and pedestrian traffic no more hazardous than is normal for the district involved, taking into consideration vehicular, turning movements in relation to routes of traffic flow proximity and relationship to intersections, adequacy of site distances, location and access of off-street parking and provisions for pedestrian traffic with particular attention to minimizing pedestrian-vehicle conflicts. This is a school district. I would imagine this township and law enforcement, I'd more than imagine, are going to do whatever they have to to make this location very safe, very healthy for the welfare of the residents and the students. Three, the proposed use shall be designed as to the location, size, intensity, site layout and periods of operation of any such proposed use to eliminate any possible nuisance emanating therefrom which might be noxious to the occupants of any other nearby uses permitted, whether by reason of dust, noise, fumes, vibration, smoke or lights. I don't know what kind of noxious uses a high school's going to generate or football games every Friday in the fall. I think this is within the standard of reasonable American living in all communities, wherever folks have the opportunity. And this is a great opportunity. Four, the proposed use shall be such that the proposed location and height of buildings or structures and location, nature and height of walls, fences and landscaping will not interfere with or discourage the appropriate development and use of adjacent land and buildings or unreasonably affect their value. I doubt it. I drove through the subdivision right next to where, and adjacent to the high school where this development will be built. And what's going in at this development, this applicant, I think is much nicer than what already exists next to it, without question and hands down. I wish this were 40 years ago. I'd be in first in line to send our three kids to this high school where they wouldn't have to get on some big yellow school bus waiting outside there in, in the winter and all kinds of foul weather. They could walk in the winter in the foul weather like most of us did years ago when we didn't have these stupid things making us more stupid. They could talk face to face with their friends and classmates and develop a sense of community. And we got to measure that next to this quantity issue. The only issue for quantity for me is counting cash. Anything else is quality. And I love this to be the first proposition, the first plan that's audited in our master plan as we do into the future. Our master plan and the five things that we were suggested to propose that be audited from here forward. And quality of life was one of my five. Five, the use, proposed use shall relate harmoniously with the physical and economic aspects of adjacent land uses in regards to prevailing shopping habits, convenience of access by prospective patrons, continuity of development and need for particular service and facility in specific areas of the township. Land isn't being built anymore or made anymore around our only high school in the township. This is a one last opportunity. This land was never going to be farmed again once water and sewer went into this township. The founders, the people before us, who saw that agriculture was fading fast and residential was emerging faster than ever, voted to make infrastructure, water and sewer a part of the future of this township as residential is our tax base. Abby, do you have something?
No.
Okay. Six, the proposed use is necessary for the public convenience at the proposed location. I don't know what's more convenient than for our children to be able to walk to their high school. I can't imagine what would be more convenient for parents to know their kids don't have to wait out for a school bus trapped on that 70-passenger box. What's more convenient than walking to a football game? What's more convenient than walking with your friends, your classmates, instead of doing the stupidity that these iPhones generate, destroying this current generation and the one immediately before it? Seven, the proposed use is so designated, located, planned and operated so the public health, safety and welfare will be protected. I don't know where there is a more planned and operated public health, safety and welfare than in a school zone. I know we have kooks now and then that show up and want to destroy lives. But that is the rare, rare occasion. Health, safety and welfare in a school zone, it's the utmost priority in any community. Eight, the proposed use shall not cause substantial injury to the value of other property in the vicinity in which it is located and will not be detrimental to existing and/or other permitted land uses in the zoning district. This development will enhance the value in spite of the issue of density. Will enhance the value of anything immediately around it. And this one will fill up as quickly as anything as this applicant has built in this township, if not faster. Again, I wish it was 40 years ago. I'd be first in line to have you build a house. Additional conditions if applicable. I don't have any more at this point in time.
Can I add?
You can.
Um, the traffic study waiver, that does have to be waived if you're not requiring a traffic study. And then also any of the comments, even though they addressed them, you know, in, in their presentation, do need to be addressed in the development agreement and plan.
Okay.
Including the ramp down to 28 Mile Road to connect in that sidewalk across the street.
See, this is why they're here. They do very good work. And when they have to drill down twice, they do even better work. Thank you. Yes, that's part of my motion. I don't want to repeat what either of you said. I'm satisfied with, with President Prozac's definition, explanation of the request to waive the traffic study. This is a school zone. The hell if there's going to be any problem with traffic there. If there is, hey, I'll eat my words. But I think our township and our law enforcement and our community is going to be well on top of that. We had a, a community traffic study done about six years ago. It anticipated the future. All right, it wasn't specific, but we're talking about 60-some units. We're not talking about a Cabrini-Green, Cabrini-Green high-rise out in the Chicago area where there are hundreds of families, maybe thousands. And that place is destroyed, so, so much good that did. Thank God we don't have that kind of plan before us and hopefully never will. But thank you, Dana. Thank you, Kayla. Part of the, the emotion that I am making. So, any further forward, this, any further, this recommendation's going to be forwarded and placed on the upcoming agenda based on the notification requirements for a public hearing on a scheduled board meeting date. There's no requirement for board meeting hearing, is there?
Yes.
There is?
Yes.
We thought, I thought before.
No.
You're making a recommendation right now to the board.
Yes, we are.
And the board requires a public hearing also. That was how.
Will be this, at the, at the board meeting. It'll be the public hearing. Okay.
Yeah.
It is at the board meeting and then the public hearing 30 days later.
July 16th, if everything is received in time to meet that publication deadline.
Very good. We got that in the motion. So now all I need is a second.
Mr. Chair, I'll second that motion. Or I should say, I'll second that e-motion.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Sir Peter. All right. Dana, roll call.
Mr. Sacco?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
No.
Ms. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Chaplin?
No.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Okay. We have, what, three by three?
No.
Two, three, four. Four to two. Yep.
Four to.
Four to.
Motion passed. Four. One, two.
One, two.
We have two, two no's.
No. Yes, yes. Yes, yes. No, no.
You had two no's.
No, you got, you got a four to four.
You were a pro.
Yeah, it passed.
You passed. Yeah, we hate to tell you this, but you passed.
Congratulations.
I was confused.
Don't feel bad.
I stole that.
All right.
I've never seen a more relieved look on a man's face.
I'll build a beautiful lobby. Yeah, I know you, and.
We know you will.
I know you will. You always do. And I appreciate that. Four kids went to school. I, I personally, I personally like the fact that my kids are bused to the high school. I, I don't want my kids walking to school because I don't want to be that close. That's why I moved here.
Yeah. Okay. So we're going to move on?
We're going to move on. That's it, isn't it?
Good luck, Michael Anfield.
Thank you.
And Santino.
Yes, thank you.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
World support.
He talks too much, though, Mike. He talks too much.
You know, you have to know when to say something and more importantly, when not to say something.
I thought that was the agenda.
Well, it is. It pretty much is. We don't have any further discussion.
We're here, let's do it all.
But we do have to adjourn.
We got project update.
Next. Uh, that'll be on, all of this will be on Thursday.
All that's on Thursday.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
To second that. To adjourn?
Okay.
Very wonderful.
I'm all over the second.
Yeah, all over.
All right, thank you, Peter. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, good job, folks. You got a.
Now, you take your binders this time because everything's in there.
Oh.